This is a regular conference of the city council that's incorporated in the annual meetings known as 2014, which was filed in the city clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board on December 27, 2013, and sent to the Star Ledger and the Home News Tribune in compliance with the provisions of the open public meeting law of New Jersey.
Councilman Questa.
Here.
Councilman Torres. Councilman Gonzalez.
Yeah.
Councilman Keenan. Councilman Sedano.
Here.
Councilman Baumann. Councilman Maza.
Here.
President Prokhan Perkins Augustin.
Public speaking, is anyone here wishing to address city council? Anyone here wishing to, please state your name and address for the reference.
My name is Ernestine L. Smith, 70 West Avenue Avenue, and live in New Jersey. I'd like to make this public announcement. I have a problem this coming Saturday, MS. Also trying to address the issue of healthcare disparities. I am a member, well, the commissioners, I used to have a member, of Governor Christie, MS Task Force, and also actually part of the force of MS Society also. MS Society want to come to Elizabeth, Clayfield Hillside in Newark, so they want outreach to urban people MS. So, hopefully they'll come, they're coming this Saturday. I'm gonna walk with over our little gaining help minorities. I'm lucky to be here today, 'cause I lost my sight. I was walking to another way I go to, walking, that's going to push us, all of a sudden I got dark, I couldn't see nothing, that really scared me. The feeling that I just lost my ability to walk, that scares me too, you know, I always walk the streets, I'm not even able to walk the streets, that's kinda scary too. I said something has to be done within urban areas, we can handle this problem. When I lost my sight, I said daddy, I have to go to the hospital. They said Tina, where you are, take me to Union. If I go to Trenton House, they tried to handle me, they are trying to overlook hospital. So take me to Union, you can do it there, 'cause I have neurologist who deal with people MS. I was to be a special eye doctor, it's not I for neurologist, they deal with people MS and stroke victims, they can help me there. I said wait a minute, I don't know what Elizabeth, born and raised in Elizabeth, why can't I go to my own hospital? You know, 'cause I have the right position to help me, which is a shame. I took my oncologist, I was there Monday for nine to five for my treatment at the cancer center. You know why? It's a shame, there's not enough beds, people get chemo. Patient in a place from nine o'clock in the morning to five o'clock at night, 'cause there's no beds.
Where?
Trenton House and Cancer Center. That's kinda scary. It's scary, cancers happen so fast in this country, there's no beds. You know, it's really sad. And one person, are you, are you a patient? Yes. But you don't look like you have cancer. Said, I do. I said, what about you? I'm a patient too. You have cancer patient too? She said, yes, but I'm terminal. But you're not. How do you know? You look so healthy. I said, same as you do. She was placed in Philadelphia, she said, come get us from Philadelphia to Rosa Park. And the limousine said, wow, what place is this? And they got hotel, five-star hotel room. I said, King side bed, King side bed. Wow, local choice, said, yeah, I'm going to MS. But why should I have to go to Philadelphia and serve like that? And Trenton House will be a what? A regional hospital. I also talked to my oncologist, Dr. Levinson, we discussed course all the time. I said, when is September? He said, I don't know, September is sickle cell month. Why, nothing to do with sickle cell. Newark, Elizabeth, if I want in sickle cell, I have to go to Newark, Beth Israel, and sometimes go Essex County, St. Farnes, but Elizabeth is an urban area that doesn't, why can't I go here and get sickle cell? I have a disease myself, my mother does, and I have to treat. I didn't know more about disease. Another company helped me, one company, Hemophilia X. You can't find help with hemophilia here in Elizabeth. There are a lot of people with hemophilia X. They wouldn't do, be on the board for that too. I said, sure, I joined many boards, because I'm a sociopath. Ultimately, I'm a school-trained sociopath. I did my six-year term at Rutgers, you know, four years at Trenton House, and two years at Rutgers, so I'm a sociopath. So I decided I could join any board, help people with my health issues.
Mr. Smith, you have about one minute to sum up.
Okay, I have to go, I have a limousine come pick me up. It's not a real limousine, it's called excellent, 'cause when I lost my vision, I did severe damage to my left eye, so danger would not let me drive anymore legally, I don't want to go to jail. So I'm glad I'm able to say this, I hope that I see you there Saturday, with a place there.
Did you get Councilman Torres?
Yes, on Saturday.
The next one?
Sure.
Are there any other residents or taxpayers wishing to address city council? Say, you know, I need to play that portion.
Any questions? Let me over you.
Letter dated December 11, 2014, from the business administrator. Advising that being satisfied that an emergency did exist recommends the award of contract to Big Top Contractors Inc., Avenue, New Jersey, for the demolition of 1084-1086 Elizabeth Avenue in the amount of $4,900.
Any questions?
Letter dated December 11, 2014, from the business administrator recommending awarding a contract to Independence Constructors, Bridge Water, New Jersey, for cleaning, inspections, and monitoring of oil-water separators and above and underground tanks at various locations for New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection compliance for the period December 1, 2014 through March 31, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $75,000.
Any questions?
Letter dated December 11, 2014, from the business administrator recommending awarding a contract to First Priority Emergency Vehicles, Inc., Manchester, New Jersey, for one-road rescue 2008 or newer Ultra Medic Type 1 ambulance module or equivalent in the amount of $74,750.
Any questions?
Letter dated December 11, 2014, from the business administrator recommending awarding a contract to Almond Materials, Inc., Western Avenue, New Jersey, to purchase road materials to improve and not limited to asphalt, stone, and salt through the Union County Co-op at a cost not to exceed $100,000.
Any questions?
Letter dated December 12, 2014, from the business administrator requesting authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement by and between City of Elizabeth and Elizabeth Fire Department Officers International Association of Firefighters, Local 2040, for the period July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2018.
Is there any questions?
This is an increase, right?
Tom.
Yes, salary increase for union contract negotiations, so if you wanted half percent per year, four years, and that's with the...
For the current firefighters or for the ones in...
Yeah, whoever on board, during those four years, compared to time. And this is for the, this is for the supervisors, I believe.
Are you in 2040?
Is this in line with the other contracts that we've done, that we've approved?
This isn't so bad.
Is this in line with the other increases that we've done?
Yes, yes, six percent over four years.
This is just for supervisors or for...
Yeah, this is supervisor.
Any other questions? If you want to view the contract in its entirety, you can see, you have the contract.
Not yet.
Who has it, one of you?
We can get it, yeah, we can get it.
For those who want, yeah, okay.
Letter dated December 15, 2014, from the business administrator recommending awarding a contract to Hertrich Fleet Services, Inc., Milford, Delaware, for the purchase of five 2015 Chevrolet Impalas to replace three vehicles within Department of Health and Human Services and scrap two vehicles no longer fit for service at a cost of $17,899 each totaling $89,495.
Any questions?
No, what's the number of the old car?
Scraped.
About how old are they?
They're two.
They're two.
Probably over 20 years, close to 20 years old. There might be just one, there might be just one. We can find out, Mrs. Enger, can you find out?
Sure.
They said that what they're gonna scrap too, that you're no longer fit for service.
Yeah, they were gonna scrap, and they had three, it might be shifted around to different departments that don't need it, not much of a daily basis.
Yeah, 'cause they have their cars, right? Ooh. Thank you.
Letter dated December 16, 2014, from the business administrator requesting to amend the resolution adopted September 9, 2014, awarding a contract to International Salt Company, LLC, for the purchase of rock and solar salt at a cost not to exceed $459,130, specifically to reflect the new company name and address, Morton Salt, Inc., Chicago, Illinois.
Okay, any questions? Is this a nature, and then add, and add this?
This is present, I just have a question. I guess they're assuming that we might not need anything past January 31st? Because the contract is up to that, but what if, like, we run out of supply and there's snowstorms past that? I'm not sure if that makes a difference, but...
August 2, January 13.
Yeah, January 31st, 2015. But what I'm saying is like, what if we have to purchase past that day and we don't have salt?
Are these dates correct?
Because it just seems like we could get snowstorms in February.
Maybe sixteen.
That's only four months, yeah, the dates on sound line.
Yeah, we'll double check those dates.
Thank you, Councilman, for bringing that.
No problem, thank you.
Yeah, that, maybe that's supposed to be sixteen?
Sixteen, probably sixteen.
Or probably seventeen with that amount of money.
Yeah, we'll check with the public.
That looks like a two-year contract with the amount of money, huh? Just make sure. I'll check the date. Good on you.
Gracias.
Okay, a letter dated December 16, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer. Advising that additional grants may be appropriated in 2015 State this year budget, Budget Amendments, Chapter 159.
Any questions?
Letter dated December 16, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer. Requesting authorization for the City of Elizabeth to submit an application to the local finance board to participate in the New Jersey Environmental Trust Financing Program to finance the Trumble Street Blood Control Project in the amount of $5.5 million.
Any questions?
Yeah, Patricia.
Yes.
The original wasn't, wasn't that $9 million for this project on Trumble Street? Why we only funding by...
No, that was the bond order, so $5.5 million, now we're going out...
That was the total bond orders.
Yeah, now we're going out to the local finance board to, to fund it through the New Jersey EIT, before the bond order, it's just authorized appropriations. Now we're going financing through the lower cost.
But it's not gonna be over 20, than 5.5, I thought it was higher than that.
No.
If you supply something, what do you know? It says different.
It's okay.
Were you talking about the progress street also?
Right, the whole...
Those Trumble Street and progress?
Yeah, yeah, it's still got progress, I think it's about four and a half.
Oh, that's a separate, that's separate, the progress?
Yeah, yeah, it's a separate, maybe that's what...
That's right, right.
It was a total.
Probably taking up the two, total.
No problem, okay.
Okay.
Letter dated December 16, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer. Requesting that your honorable body consider approving for the city to file an application for grant with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Flood Hazard Risk Reduction and Resiliency Grant Program for the South Street Flood Control Program.
Any questions?
Letter dated December 16, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer. Requesting that your honorable body consider the approval of a capital ordinance authorizing the design and permitting appropriations for the East Grand Street Supermarket Project in accordance with the amended and restated redevelopment agreement in the amount of $500,000.
Okay, what do we do?
We have pending the East Grand Street Supermarket Project. Signing off with the redevelopment as part of the agreement, the city was to fund $900,000 plus $500,000, which is the following letter, for infrastructure improvements and construction improvements, that's all part of the deal. In return, the city will be getting a $3.1 million, selling the property that's on Trumble Division, the old Bus Depot, okay, and...
So the developer is gonna give us $3.1 million?
Who?
The developer.
Yes, the $3.1 million, and this is all a part of, these are monies that have actually have been appropriated and budgeted for already, so, trigger the budget, and we have the monies available. And it's...
Do you have the developer? Do you have a developer on this project?
Yes, it's, it works right now. Hopefully it'll be signed within weeks, weeks from now. And we have the money during this for you for budget purchases for next year.
Okay, any other questions?
Letter dated December 16, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer. Requesting that your honorable body consider the approval of a capital ordinance authorizing construction appropriations for the East Grand Street Supermarket Project in accordance with the amended and restated redevelopment agreement in the amount of $900,000.
Questions, yes, Mr. Smith?
Same thing, yeah, one's for the design and permitting, $500,000, and the other is for construction, so, they're actually interchangeable, the total is just gonna be $1 million
Okay. Letter dated December 16, 2014, from the Chief Financial Officer. Requesting approval of a tax exemption under the long-term tax exemption law for the Parker Walk Urban Renewal LLC, Care of Community Investment Strategies, Lawrenceville, New Jersey, which will be a resolution and authorizing the mayor to enter into a financial agreement providing for a payment in lieu of taxes for the construction of 11 new buildings with 96 units on the property located at 2022 Parker Road, which will be in ordinance.
Are there any questions?
This is present, my only question actually has to do with 2:30 Parker Road, if there's any...
Oh, that's the next one.
It's the next one, oh, I went ahead. I should have gone ahead.
For their construction jobs, where are they pulling their workers from? Can you try and find out where they're getting their work from?
Usually the financial agreement calls for, first preference for Elizabeth.
Can I see, can I get a copy of it?
Yes, sure.
Can I just see?
Sure.
For both of these?
Mm-hmm.
Ready? You have the president's, you have the president's.
Oh, yeah, right here.
Want to know why, why we weren't told to bring your sunglasses today?
Letter dated December 16, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer. Requesting approval of a tax exemption under the long-term tax exemption law for the Parker's View Urban Renewal LLC, Care of Community Investment Strategies, Lawrenceville, New Jersey, and authorizing the mayor to enter into a financial agreement providing for a payment in lieu of taxes for the renovation of one building and create 60 units of family housing on the property located at 230 Parker Road.
Anything, Council?
Thank you.
Letter dated December 10, 2014, from the Director of Health and Union Services. Requesting to declare January as cervical health awareness month.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated December 5, 2014, from the Director of Planning and Community Development. Requesting to amend the resolution adopted October 22, 2013, between the City of Elizabeth and Josephine's Place, specifically to extend the contract to October 31, 2014.
Any questions?
Yeah, madam, this particular center, they're doing such a great job that they deserve to be renewed again.
I agree with you.
Letter dated December 10, 2014, from the Director of Planning and Community Development. Requesting to amend the resolution adopted February 3, 2014, with the Elizabeth Development Company for on-the-job training, specifically to amend the agreement and to extend the contract to February 27, 2015.
Any questions?
Letter dated December 10, 2014, from the Director of Planning and Community Development. Requesting authorization to designate Prestige Environmental, Inc., as the license site remediation professional to perform the environmental work required by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for the 200 South Second Street properties in an amount not to exceed $7,000.
Any questions?
Letter dated December 12, 2014, from the Director of Planning and Community Development. Requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary to discharge the city's second mortgage deferred payment loan program on the property located at 124136 South Park Street in the amount of $101,250.
Any questions?
Yeah, what is this? This is...
I'll talk to the council. Tom.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
This one.
Oh, I see what's going on.
The discharge of the mortgage?
This, right here, we have a water board. This is the one she's at. Discharge of mortgage.
Oh, you're in discharge of mortgage?
Yeah.
What did she write?
The 134.
Yeah, there's that order.
I know, 134, okay, it's not in order.
You skipped a couple bits. It might be in the order.
No, mine is in order.
Yeah, yours is in order, sure.
Oh, no, this is...
She wrote that one.
Wait, wait, it's not in order. No, no, this is later.
Right.
I don't understand. Chuck the garbage, yours is in order. No one has done. Thank you, Council.
I have, it's just not, it wasn't the next one.
All right, so right now we're on the discharge of mortgage for 134136 South Park.
It was in order.
I'll explain it later.
That's fine, it's fine.
Everybody has?
First, the attached. Go ahead. First, Council.
We can move on?
Something's happening, so far.
Okay. Letter dated December 15, 2014, from the Director of Planning and Community Development. Requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary and appropriate to provide an owner-occupied basic program deferred payment loan on the property located at 563 Madison Avenue at a cost not to exceed $20,000.
Now it's this one.
Letter dated December 15, 2014, from the Director of Planning and Community Development. Requesting to rescind ordinance number 3589 and ordinance number 3723 adopted March 2000. Authorizing the transfer of 325 South Park Street, 327 South Park Street, 118 Fulton Street, and 326 Magnolia Avenue from the City of Elizabeth to the Housing Authority of the City of Elizabeth and Waters Edge LLC. The Housing Authority of the City of Elizabeth and Waters Edge no longer have any interest in developing these sites.
Yeah, one question, the council president, the role that he acquired about the property at 118 Fulton Street, checked that out, go right down there, it was a vacant property, 25 by 100. We researched that property, and it led to an ordinance that went back to 2000, that supposedly transferred it, four properties over to the Housing Authority, never happened, the Housing Authority wants no part in it, and they're reverting back to the City of Elizabeth, and we hope to get them on the city auction sometime in February. So four properties, all the same, four vacant...
Now, that being said, Madam President, if I could have a floor.
Sure.
That being said, Tony, since the year 2000 of March, they owned the property.
No.
We transferred it to them.
These weren't executed.
So we created an ordinance and never executed on the ordinance. So, because we've been cutting, we've been doing all the work on these properties. So we could have put these things on the auction block a long time ago.
Well, I think it was associated with the whole project, and it just didn't materialize, and it just kind of...
Ever since 2000.
But I know, just go by the wayside.
Twenty years ago.
3589.
President, 14 years.
Any other questions?
This one, 3589.
All those properties, all right.
4, 4. 118 ain't on there.
Yeah, that's on there.
Letter dated December 16, 2014, from the Director of Planning and Community Development. Requesting that your honorable body consider authorizing the Elizabeth Development Company to fund the third and final construction phase of the Shilohm Hope Care CDC project for the period July 1, 2014 to June 30, 2015, in the amount of $491,139.14, subject to verification of a certificate of availability of funds.
Any questions? Put it on.
Letter dated December 15, 2014, from the Director of Public Works. Recommending awarding a contract to Gray Construction Patterson, New Jersey, to provide emergency maintenance on the existing levee along the Elizabeth River from the Trenton Avenue Bridge to the Route 1 Bridge, in the amount of $3,575,564.22.
Any questions?
Melinda, which one, where you reading from?
It's this one here.
Public Works.
Word of a contract. Oh, I can't, it's in the face of the stone. No?
Yeah, I see it, right here. I got it. Okay, that's one I was asking, that's good. Well, I'm glad something is happening, finally.
Okay, any other questions? Put it on.
Letter dated December 15, 2014, from the Director of Public Works. Requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept, and sign all appropriate documents for the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Flood Hazard Risk Reduction and Resiliency Grant Program to offset costs associated with the South Street Flood Control Project for an amount not to exceed $2 million.
Hallelujah, another one for the sixth.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Tony, can you let me know, Councilor Torres, where are we with the acquisition of the property at the corner of Atlantic Street and Third Avenue? The old Benicio property there? I know we're looking to purchase it, but where are we? Are we under contract? Are we still negotiating? George might know.
I don't know at all, but I can just...
See where we're at in that, because...
You said it was Atlantic and Third?
Yeah.
Okay. Third Street and Third Avenue.
Third Avenue, right on the corner, because that's gonna, talking to the director, whenever we acquire that, they're going to do something similar to what they're doing over on Trumble Street with the underground detention base, and that's gonna help alleviate flooding from the Sixth Ward and the Third, and the Third Avenue, 'cause a lot of the water get caught up.
Okay.
As quick as we can do that, might alleviate a lot of the problems going into the flood season.
Okay.
Madam, was that side also cleaned up from contamination already?
Well, that's what I gotta find out. I don't know.
They did that, that was done, I think.
I don't know the answer. That's what I have, I don't know where it's at. I don't know if it's on contract, it's doing cleanup, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Letter dated December 15, 2014, from the Director of Public Works. Recommending awarding a contract to Johnson, Mir Moran, and Thompson, Inc., Trenton, New Jersey. to Johnson, Miramaran, and Thompson, Inc., Trenton, New Jersey, to provide civil and mechanical engineering services in connection with the design and construction inspection renovation of the Mickey Walker Recreation Center at a lump sum cost of one hundred thirty-six thousand, two hundred fifty dollars, plus reimbursable.
Any questions?
Letter dated December fifteen, two thousand fourteen, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to James R. Guerra, Elizabeth, to provide architectural services in connection with the design and construction inspection renovation of the Mickey Walker Recreation Center at a lump sum cost of sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, plus reimbursables.
Any questions?
Letter dated December sixteen, two thousand fourteen, from the Director of Public Works, requesting approval of change order number one, final, for the contract awarded to Al Neto Contractors for sidewalk and drainage improvements at various city parks and right-of-ways at an original cost of three hundred seventy-five thousand, five hundred forty-five dollars, to provide further for additional work added to the contract to repair damage to the pedestrian plaza and the West Grand Street, Elmore Avenue triangle caused by vehicle accidents at an additional cost of nineteen thousand, ninety-five dollars, eighty-three cents, thereby raising the cost of the contract to three hundred ninety-four thousand, six hundred forty dollars, eighty-three cents.
That's the question, were we able to recoup any of this money from the people who caused the ordinance?
Uh, I don't know, but I can look into it and get back to you that I didn't have anything to do with this one.
And L I O N S, it's like the lion.
Oh, they put, L Y, oh, yeah, the lion.
Like the lion's croc.
Yeah, that's what it is. Lion's croc, right.
Anything else?
Letter dated December eleven, two thousand fourteen, from Lieutenant Marcus, Traffic Division, requesting to establish a mid-block crosswalk along with stop signs and stop markings on Amboy Avenue between Bayway Avenue and Myrtle Street for the safety of pedestrians crossing at this location to get back and forth to Freeport Metro. Warren, on Bayway Avenue.
Any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. I've discussed it already with the lieutenant. Turn me over to him as well to go over there and look at it. But he's informed me and based on what he's provided here. I don't have no problem with it. Put it on, thank you.
Letter dated December eight, two thousand fourteen, from the Police Director, requesting to establish handicap parking spaces. Sixth Ward, there's two, or six fourteen Marshall Street, personalized.
Old?
Both.
Both of them.
Okay. First Ward, twenty Delaware Street, personalized. Sixth Ward, seventeen Palmer Street.
Put them on, this gentleman's been waiting three months.
Second Ward, eighteen and a half Cedar Street. Fifth Ward, hold on, Sixth Ward, three twenty-nine South Seventh Street.
Put on old?
First Ward, four oh six First Avenue.
Old.
Deletions, five fifty-two Franklin Street and fifteen Hayes Avenue. It's requested by Councilman Mazza to put a personalized handicap parking space at five sixty-five Fourth Avenue on. And we have to rescind two personalized handicap parking spaces that were already approved. One at four thirty-eight Fulton Street and the other one, two oh six Clark Place. Okay? And also in your package, there should be an ordinance num, to amend chapter fifteen point four point forty? Okay. Of code of City of Elizabeth entitled Buildings and Construction, specifically Section M, miscellaneous permit fees. The wrong schedule was attached to the original, so they have to amend miscellaneous. Okay? Letter dated December eight, two thousand fourteen, from Armando Guerra, President of the Leonis Cubanos de Elizabeth, New Jersey, Inc., Elizabeth, requesting permission to install a collection box to be located on city property at the northeast corner of the intersection of Newark and North Avenues for used eyeglasses and hearing aids to help the visually and hearing impaired.
Do we need anything special for this, George?
Uh, this is the first that I see this, so I'm not...
We have, I know that the Lions, the Portuguese Lions have one nearby that triangle. And they're on its triangle.
Yeah. That's not Lion's Triangle.
So, I'd like to have this happen, I don't know how you, if there's anything they need to do in addition to just...
Okay, I'll look into it, let you know.
We do collect a lot of eyeglasses. We send them to the Iceford Media out of Bridgewater. We recycle them and...
I just wanted to comment, I think this is great, definitely needed. But I'm just curious exactly where in the port they would put it, because that intersection is...
Like a mailbox.
Okay.
It's a mailbox.
Yeah.
But it's painted yellow.
Okay.
So it would probably be in that area between the curb and sidewalk.
Okay.
Or a mailbox, you know.
It shouldn't be a problem.
It's next to the street lamp, whatever.
It's just the intersections.
Oh, it's not in the intersection.
Ms. Burke? Man, enough for anything. We had a situation where somebody else put a box someplace on Broad Street and I think it was stolen, somebody got hurt and they were trying to find who we have to sue, so let's find out if anything happened.
That's right, so what else do they need to do?
Right. Whatever, indemnity, whatever.
So I know we had to go through...
Right, man.
We went through a series of things, only did ours.
Okay. Also in your package, there's a letter dated December third, two thousand fourteen, from the City Treasurer submitting the treasurer's report of receipt and disbursement for the month of August, two thousand fourteen, a statement of bail balances and investments as of August thirty-first, two thousand fourteen.
Okay, there was a... Councilman Torres?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank all my colleagues, especially the Ward Council, and also Burke for doing the annual tree lighting. It's a great event for the community, the kids enjoyed it. I know I tried to make each and every one of them, but I missed two. But just want to say, you know, we're the talk of the town and it's definitely needed here in the City of Elizabeth, something positive. And many of you know, but the councilwoman, her father passed away yesterday, so I just wanted to express my condolences and prayers to you and believe you're here today.
Yeah.
But Yolanda, I'd like to do a little more of it, to Mr. Burke. That's it.
Thank you.
It's obvious that the first word, council, is getting real good because she took exactly what I was gonna say. I passed.
I passed also.
I do too. Oh, man, the pressure's all about now. But I do, I just wanted to say, in the corner of Cross Avenue and Durant, they just put a four-way stop sign recently that was clean. But they were supposed to put the marking on the ground too, but they didn't. And because it's in the intersection near the school, people are not used to that stop sign, so I'm pretty sure they're just gonna take it. And I just want to make sure, Yolanda, who else spoke of North Avenue and Cross? Or kind of to put like a blinking yellow light or a pedestrian crosswalk? I had mentioned to you, I just wanted to make sure.
It's not in your package? Lieutenant Marcus sent it back. But T and M didn't do a study. It's just telling. T and M doesn't have a study included, you know, to determine the need.
So are they... Okay, I'll reach out to them. Okay. Thank you, that's so much, Madam President.
Okay, Nelson?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to thank, in fact, we said it, George, for sending out the letter. They had the changes made for Elizabeth Destination Marketing Organization. Didn't realize till she worked with me, but now they make the appointments. And so we had to write a letter to them asking for the change.
Who's this?
Well, thank the Elizabeth Development Marketing Organization. Yeah, we don't make the appointments to them. After reading the ordinance, we approve that they make the appointments. So we have to write to them.
And replacements.
And replacements.
So we replaced calls with...
Yeah, I sent the letter. Yeah, she sent the letter, so I was just thanking her for it.
I didn't realize it either.
Also, I didn't realize that the last meeting, we approved an ordinance rescinding a personalized handicap at four twenty-six South Fifth Street, which I had requested, but we never put on the resolution. Put it on as a reserve.
What do you mean, you said...
Not personalized, but just...
Not personalized.
Yeah, but we need a resolution to make it reserved and it wasn't on the agenda. And I didn't know it was...
For that, it was just the ordinance to, the ordinance was rescinded.
The ordinance was rescinded, right.
Okay.
But we didn't put the resolution...
But the resolution wasn't on, okay.
So...
All right, I'll check that.
Put it on, unless we did it before, but I don't think so.
Well, usually we do one first and then do the other. Okay, then I'll check it.
If we could put it on for the next meeting.
Yolanda, remember I called you or I left a message where you offered that handicap on First Avenue to be removed? The gentleman moved. Couple of months ago, I did it once, I didn't see him appear on the deletion. What are we waiting for?
I sent the letter over.
To the police department?
Mm-hmm. So they'll check it out and then send me back the letter.
Yeah, but it comes from a council manager, just give them order to remove because the guy moved, he notified me, he no longer live there. And there's not enough spacing on First Avenue.
You should've sent the letter, please, I promise.
Right?
You should've sent the letter to the traffic.
I did.
That's what I'm saying, the owner of the spot, because that's where he went to apply for it, that's where he should've...
Well, he was a tenant and he notified me. We just put it in about a year ago, one of your friends. On First Avenue by a closest street from Mr. Tassi.
All right, so the letter you sent, so...
I know, but three months. We have to give him a better motorcycle so he can move fast.
Anything else, Tom?
Thanks.